After all. It's 5:30, so we'll call the order this meeting for Monday, December 30, 2019. Carl, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye, here.
Ronin.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Rife.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rucks.
Here.
Mayor Shawman.
Here.
Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for the meeting of December 23, 2019. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion from Rucks and a second from Olson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Next we've got.
Mayor, excuse me. Because we have someone on the phone, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, good call.
On all the motions and seconds.
Sorry about that.
Aye.
There we are. Carl, give us an official roll call, would you?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rucks.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry officially now. Next order of business, we've been open forum, no one has signed up for the open forum, but we do have an agenda item of the Aberdeen Area Chamber of Commerce presenting their marketing report. I see Lisa is here. Lisa, I know you guys weren't working here today, so thanks for making it out for us.
We weren't. Don't tell us this. Yeah. I have a Jeep.
This evening. Perfect.
Good, well, happy end of the year, everybody. For us, it was great 2019, and I hope it was for you as well, and we're looking forward to another great year next year. I just wanted to quickly go through, give you an update on what we've done this year with the city marketing money that the city has allowed us to use this year. Not, didn't quite spend it all, just be upfront with that, just because of the whole rebranding thing that we were planning on doing. So, we do have some money that we're carrying over into next year, but we are definitely going to go forward with that process, and we will be using that money next year on all the things that we had planned to do this year but didn't get done. So, our, what we do is focus on pretty much kind of three different areas. So, residents, day trippers, and then workforce recruitment as well. And with residents this year, we started a hashtag live local 57401 campaign, which we created a billboard for and did some social media things with. We are going to hit that a little bit harder next year. Every year, the chamber has a membership postcard that goes to all chamber members that they can display in their businesses, and that is going to be the focus of that, of kind of that look and feel next year for chamber membership. It'll go on the front page of our membership directory, and that'll be kind of the theme throughout the things that we do. So, be looking for more of that, and what that is basically is just encouraging people to live local. It's not necessarily just shopping local, but it's living local, so playing in our parks, using our professional services here, attorneys and in accounting and things like that. So, we just want people to keep their money local, whether it's shopping or any other things that they can do here. Day trippers, we've always focused on that, and we continue to do so. We encourage them to shop, eat, play, and also stay, and it's really just kind of reminding them that we're here, and we do this kind of 100 miles out of Aberdeen, so kind of the Jamestown, Mowbridge, Millbank, Watertown areas. We, that's where we're kind of hit with those out of town radio buys that we do. So, we just encourage people to try to get over here as much as they can and spend their money here. One new thing that we did this year was, we've always kind of worked a little bit on workforce recruitment, but we tried something new this year. We created a recruitment toolkit and a landing page on the aberdeenSD.com website that supports that. And basically, what that is, is a place for any employer in town who is hoping to recruit some employees to Aberdeen. It's a place for those employees to go, so the employer can send them there. It tells them about Aberdeen, gives them other links. There are some videos on there of current residents who have moved here, who kind of give a testimonial of their experiences moving to Aberdeen and living here and starting businesses and how the way of life it is here. So, it's kind of all an all encompassing thing with that. Another thing that's part of that is this 10 Reasons to Love Aberdeen, South Dakota PDF that they can download, and it's just kind of some fun graphics with things to do, safe and clean community, and we really tried to hit on a bunch of different things, education and childcare, all the things that people want to know when they're looking at relocating to a new community. So, we tried to hit everything in there, just kind of hitting the big highlights of Aberdeen and everything that it has to offer. So, that's available on that website as well. We continue to do our local and regional radio spend monthly. That's been something that's been really consistent, and we seem to be able, we seem to get some good responses from that. We hear people all the time tell us, oh, we heard those ads. So, it's nice to get that feedback. We did back off on TV this year, and the reason being was we were kind of relocating that money from the media buys for TV to the new rebranding process. So, we do have some of that money left over that we're, like I said, we're going to reallocate next year to both the rebranding and also media buys. When we actually do end up getting it done and we roll it out, we want to make a really big splash, so we want to make sure that everybody in the 100 mile radius and maybe even a little bit beyond knows that we've got the new look and feel and just kind of get it out there pretty heavy. We didn't spend any money at all this year on any of, I guess I'll call them giveaways, you know, the pens and bags and all that sort of thing. We gave what we had away to the college students at College Palooza this year, and we were planning on replenishing that supply, yet this last half of the year, which, of course, we didn't do it because we don't have the new rebranding yet. So, we'll be replenishing the supply next year with that. Another thing that we kind of shifted a little bit this year, the last few years, we've had McQuillan Creative Group do photos for us, and those photos are available to anybody who wants to use them. It's all just different kinds of things in Aberdeen that people can use to market the city. That's sitting on a SmugMug website that anybody can have access to. So, this year, we shifted to video, and Josh with Elm Creative, sorry, Elm Digital Marketing helped us do that, and there is again a place where all those videos are available to anybody who would like to use them. So, film festivals, snowmobiling, you know, all those kinds of things that sometimes we want to be able to use those to create video to share with people, so it's out there for anybody to use. We did do a little bit of advertisement as far as some of the organization guides like Snow Queen and Hockey. Many times, we will share that expense with the CVB, we'll split it with them. We did that for the Aberdeen Wings and the Hub City Hotshots this year. So, and the other thing that we did do this year was worked on some YouTube marketing. We kind of backed off on the Facebook stuff and moved it over to YouTube just to kind of give, get an idea how that would work for us this year, and we were pretty happy with the results. We actually had a pretty good, get to that page here, we actually had a pretty good, some numbers with that. Nope, I think it's on the second page. It only cost us .015 cents per impression, and we had 97,900 total impressions for the videos that we put up there, so we thought those were pretty good numbers as well. We continue to do the email campaign monthly, which is, it's called a drip campaign. So, in the last few years that we've acquired email addresses from people who went to Facebook and asked to be put into the email campaign, we have 651 people that currently get monthly emails from that, and so at the beginning of every month, there's an email that goes out kind of letting them know what is going on in Aberdeen so that they can come spend some time with us. The average open rate is anywhere from 26 to 42 percent, which we think is really good as well, and the unsubscribes from that have been less than a half a percent. So, people continue to get those emails, and many times, from between a quarter to half of the people open them. So, that's actually pretty good for something like that. So, I think that's about it. We're just kind of continuing to look towards next year with the rebranding and wanting to get all that done, because we have a lot that we're going to be doing. Once that's done, we'll be, we'll be creating a new website for aberdeenSD.com. So, what I was telling you about the relocation, that's aberdeenSD.com/the-right-move. That, and anybody can go out there and use that as a resource for their potential new employees. We'll get some new banners and a new Aberdeen backdrop. We'll be spending quite a bit on production, TV, and print, things like that. We'll get a new city jingle. We're going to need some new ads designed, and of course, those giveaways I talked about. So, we have the big plan set out, it's just a matter of getting the RFP out, which we'll probably be doing very shortly, and getting bids for the rebranding process. So, we're, our plan is fully to move ahead with that. Any questions at all?
You mentioned some carryover funds.
Yes.
How much do you currently have in reserve?
Well, what we're going to have left over from this year is going to be about 50,000, but normally, we don't have a reserve at all. We usually spend, I mean, the end of the year, we, you know, sometimes have a little bit of a shift from the end of the year to the beginning of the year. We might sometimes have a couple thousand in there just because we don't want to run out to zero if we have some bills to pay. So, this is very unusual. We don't like to do it because we know that we're allowed to use this money for the purpose that it was intended for, which we thoroughly intended to do this year. It was simply the fact that, you know, we had, we just kind of waited to see what was happening with the rebranding. So, we didn't want to make any moves that weren't going to be appropriate, so we thought our best move was just to sit back and wait and see what's going to happen, so.
Lisa, on the.
I've got a question, if I may, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Ronin for you, Lisa.
Thanks, sir. Lisa, I'm curious about the rebranding, and I'm curious about the costs that are going to be associated once some type of new logo is developed. Has anyone estimated and figured out how to pay the cost of, for instance, the signage throughout the city and some of the other costs associated with the rebranding?
We are planning on keeping the font and the color palette, which means every, pretty much everything around town should be okay. I know a lot of it just has the big A, and the colors are going to stay the same. Really, what we're looking for is the logo and the tagline, so, you know, I don't see that around town a lot on city things. You know, we've looked at the wayfinding signs and those sorts of things, none of that will have to be changed.
Okay, I appreciate knowing that, thank you.
Yeah, city vehicles still have the previous logo from the time before. Lisa, call to action on YouTube videos, what is, what are you hoping to get people to do when they see your ads on YouTube?
Well, right now, this year has been really kind of an awareness, just an awareness that Aberdeen is here. You know, eventually, we'll want to kind of move it into the workforce development recruitment piece of it. So, we, we had a great ad that Elm did that just kind of showcased Aberdeen, it had some great drone footage, and it was just kind of a fun, we had the Gypsy Day Parade overhead, and you know, just some of those fun things that showed that Aberdeen is just kind of a real vibrant community. So, it was, the first thing this year was just the awareness, and so, we can do a lot of different things with that, but this year was just, let's, let's do something fun and just see what kind of response we get. So, that was kind of the initial thing this year. We didn't know what to expect with response, but we were happy with it.
Right, yeah, a lot of impressions, it sounds like. Does anyone else have any questions for Lisa? Councilman Rucks.
So, you said you've kind of switched your focus from like Facebook to YouTube. Have you thought about maybe things like Twitter, Instagram, those types, I mean?
Yes, absolutely, and again, we're, we've kind of left some of that for the rebranding.
Okay.
We didn't want to put too much into too many things at once. A, you know, there's just not a huge amount of money to go around, but B, we kind of wanted to get that new look and feel before we did that. But yes, we're definitely, social media will be expanding next year, too.
And you said you're going to go out to RFP for.
Right.
The rebranding process?
Right.
So, and when do you anticipate having the responses back?
We would give them a month, so if it was up to me, I'd send it out on Thursday, but you know, we're still working with the CVB and the Downtown Association. Mike Bakkerney with the Development Corp actually came back to us and had some ideas and suggestions, which is the reason why we haven't actually sent it yet. He kind of wanted to circle back around and give it, throw some ideas out, so it will be very soon. I mean, I, we're all just chomping the bit to get it done, so.
And I like, I like the fact that you're collaborating with all the organizations to work, work through that process. So, of course, you know, having 50,000 carry it over, is your intent to spend all of that on the rebranding and resupply?
We believe we probably will end up doing that just because a website is costly, all the pull-up banners and the backdrop, all those things, you know, have some cost to them, and we usually, those sorts of things are used at almost all the events that we go to. We take them to the Cracker Barrels and all those sorts of things, just to, you know, kind of give that Aberdeen look and feel. So, I think it'll be, yeah, it'll be pretty close, because we have a lot of things that we need to get done with it, so, yeah.
Perfect.
And we, like I said, we thoroughly plan on spending it this year, the cost of the rebranding itself, you know, in addition to all the other things, the website and all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anyone else have anything, or else we will bid you adieu?
Okay, thanks, everyone. Happy New Year.
For coming in and presenting here this evening. Next, we've got four consent counter items, possible approval. Can I get a motion to make, approve those?
Move approval. Second.
Carl, I've got a motion from Olson and a second from Remley. Can I get a roll call vote on the consent counter items, please?
Councilmember Rucks.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got new business items. First, we've got ordinance 19-12-01, ordinance to rezone from R3 District to C2 District for the east 47 and .4 feet of lots, 7 through 9, Block 37, Bennett and Thomas Edition in the northwest fourth of Section 13, T123NR64W of the 5th PM Aberdeen, South Dakota 114, 2nd Avenue Northwest, possible first reading of ordinance 19-12-01. Brett, what can you tell us about that?
This is for Eddie's North Side. This is part of the stipulation that the zoning board put on their approval to open storage of vehicles, they need to rezone the property. Staff and planning commissioner recommend approval.
Move approval. Second.
A motion.
Question.
Councilman Olson, what have you got?
I noticed in our information, Brett, they said they haven't filed the plat yet.
The engineer they had to draw it up has been sick.
So, there should be contingent on that?
You could. I have all faith that we will be getting the plat. We won't let that drop.
Stay on that, Brett. Any other questions for Mr. Bill while we've got this discussion open? Otherwise, we've got a motion from Bunsonus, a second from Remley. Carl, can I get a roll call vote on the rezone ordinance?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rucks.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got ordinance 19-12-02, ordinance to rezone from C1 District, R4 District to R2 District for the north 20 feet of Lot 10 and south 20 feet of Lot 11, Block 37, Thomas Edition in the northwest quarter of Section 24, T123NR64W of the 5th PM Brown County, South Dakota 1207, South Main Street. Possible first reading of the ordinance 19-12-2. Brett, tell us about that rezone, please.
This is to bring the property in compliance with its existing use as a residential use. Staff and planning commissioner recommend approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Does anyone have any questions while we're open on the topic? Otherwise, we've got a motion from Johnson and a second from Rucks. Carl, can you give me a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rucks.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got ordinance 19-12-03, ordinance to rezone from C1 District and C2 District to C1 District for Lot 1 Rentall, second edition to the city of Aberdeen in the northwest quarter of Section 13, T123NR64W of the 5th PM Brown County, South Dakota 123, 8th Avenue Northwest, 702 and 706 North, 2nd Street, possible first reading of ordinance 19-12-03. Brett, you're busy over there.
We try.
Good deal.
This is for Wise Manals Rentall. They platted four lots and together, together, and this rezoning eliminates the split zoning of all those lots. Staff and planning commissioner recommend approval.
Move approval. Second.
We've got a motion from Remley and a second from Rife. Does anyone have any questions about Wise Manals Rezone? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronin.
I'm sorry, aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rucks.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next item is hearing on special one-day retail on-sale liquor license for the Aberdeen Area Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours Events. January 9th, Avera Human Performance and Fitness Center. February 13th, the Boys and Girls Club. March 12th, the Levity Entertainment. April 16th, Dakota Bank, 308 South Main Street. Possible approval of special liquor license for Aberdeen Area Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours Events for dates and locations is listed contingent upon final location inspections by the Health and Fire Departments.
Move approval. Second.
Does anyone have any questions or discussion as it relates to issuing these one-day liquor licenses to the Chamber of Commerce? We've got a motion from Remley and a second from Rife. Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rucks.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got a pay request, number one, Aberdeen Public Safety Generator Quest Construction, $37,001.67. Possible approval of the payment, number one, in the amount of $37,001.67 to Quest Construction for work on the Aberdeen Public Safety Generator project. Robin, what can you tell us about that?
Well, this is a project that the police department has been looking forward to. The generator has gone down on them, and we've had a lot of moisture intrusion into the east wall of the police building, in areas where the conduit comes through for the electricity. We've done the replacement of a lot of the stuff along the building now, and we're looking forward to maybe some better weather so we can complete some of the concrete work and some of those things that need to be done before the new generator arrives. So, we're recommending approval of payment to Quest.
Move approval. Second.
Does anyone have any questions for Robin before we close up this issue?
When will the generator arrive?
I believe they were talking somewhere in the March-April timeframe. It's going to be a few, a couple months out yet.
When the existing generator is still somewhat operational, it's gone.
It's gone.
Keep your power on as best you can.
Speaking of keeping the power on, what was the result of we hitting the line, or someone hitting the line and taking the power down? Actually, that was, that was an alley that took them down for a number of hours. They ended up having to bring in both Northwestern and their electrician to try to get everything put back together. They took one phase of the three out of operation, and consequently, they were down for a period of time, and it took them a while to get all the computers and garage doors and all those things operating. Again, it's surprising how complicated things get when you don't have backup power.
You should know, with that, it kind of reacted negatively with the old phone system. However, it was scheduled to be replaced in 2020, so they are working on a shoestring to keep that system going until the end of the year.
Any negative impact, chief, being down that couple hours?
I would say right now, the biggest issue like Lynn is talking about is our phone system right now. The answering portion of the phone doesn't work, so we're looking at that to try to repair that, and we're not going to spend a whole lot of money trying to get our answering machine component back on the phone. So, we're 30 days out, or probably 15 to 20 days out from the install of a new phone system, so we're excited about that. We used our own, our old phone system to the point where it is obsolete, so we got our money's worth out of that. As Robin talked about, we're probably going to look at a couple more power shutdowns. Our new generator is going to be a natural gas generator. So, talking to the power service people, that's going to require a bigger natural service line, gas line, something that's quite a bit bigger, so we'll be down for a little bit, but that probably would be done, I would imagine, in a month or two, so.
So, do you have a lot of people that leave you messages?
It just depends on the day and the time and the situation, so we'll probably put a note out through our Facebook, you know, we have email and we get messages that way. The city offices were notified, the other city offices, so they can handle messages for us that way as well, so. It's primarily an issue during after hours, you know, we have our reception desk that's manned, and we return calls, but it's a little bit of inconvenience right now.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Robin. We've got a motion from Bunsonus and a second from Johnson to make the payment to Quest Construction. Carl, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rucks.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got bills, the approval for the bill list for December 30, 2019, as you see, well, hopefully, we'll see on the screen here shortly. In addition to these listed, we had a couple of latecomers, US Bank Credit Card Charge of $60,819.04 to be added, as well as the payment to the South Dakota Municipal League of $4,792.03. Can I get a motion to make these payments of the bills for this week?
Move to pay.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Abstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Abstain.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Abstain motion does carry. Next we've got the city manager's report. Lynn, what have you got for us this week?
I have no report this evening, other than I wish each one of you a very good year.
What a statement or two about the harms oil explosion.
Actually, David would know more about that than I.
Hey, Dave, why don't you chime in? Have you got any information for us?
Sure.
I got an email, but I didn't have a chance to read it.
You know, it's a response by our rural fire department, and they probably will be putting out, you know, some more information on it. We did assist, I know the sheriff's office assisted, the Brown County Emergency Management, so I don't know a whole lot more than what's been released by the American News, and that's very accurate. There were some injuries involved, and I know that traffic's opened back up now, and the fire department still probably is on scene working with that. I know that you have fuel and different chemicals and different containers and hazardous material there, so they're probably still working on that as we speak right now, so.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have anything before we call to adjourn? Councilman Bunsonis.
A couple things. Probably should have brought one of them up during chambers comments, but do we have any stipulations currently that we only allow them to carry over a certain amount of money every year?
No.
Okay. I thought we had done something like that, but I couldn't...
I'm not aware of anyone having a reserve balance from year to year.
Right, right. Second thing is I want to commend Robin and his staff for what I think is a great idea for the core area, and that is the windrows and allowing traffic to, you know, pretty much flow downtown unlike some, you know, snow events. So some people don't get the joys of getting stuck and getting pushed out, and I just think it's a great idea. I think it shows that we're continuing to think about snow removal in this community, and this is just a great example of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
You know, that was one of those deals where didn't really feel that it was a great idea to leave the downtown really impassable for the ensuing 24 hours. So we thought we'd try something a little bit different. There were still plenty of challenges with it. Some things that, you know, I don't know that we can correct, but it's certainly better than just leaving it to, you know, let everybody get stuck for the next 24 hours. So I hope it was a worthwhile experiment.
I think for the depth of snow, it was absolutely necessary. I saw that there was, on the streets, it didn't hit. It was definitely a lot more cars stuck, and saw a lot of good motion of traffic, so. Yeah, you guys take quite a bruising. We all take quite a bruising from people that are unhappy with the snow removal process, but I would say that I totally agree that you guys have done a great job over there, the resources that are available.
Any updates on snowing? I know, snow removal, I know this has probably been a little bit slower process. Again, with the amount of drifting and snow, I know Milwaukee was still pretty impassable when I drove by, but...
We did try to punch a hole through places like Milwaukee. There were some narrowed up things on Fairgrounds Road, 15th Avenue.